This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this is not. Okay. We'll start out with the village board's special minute meeting or meeting minutes. And I believe that is just going to be Peter, myself, and Jason, because you two were not here for that meeting. I'll entertain a motion to accept those meetings.
Move second.
Any discussion? Sure, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the mayor as well. And then the minutes from the village board organizational regular meeting minutes, which everyone was here for, entertain a motion for that.
Move second. Oh, sorry. I want to let everyone.
You're right. Any discussion on any of that?
Well, I'd like to officially refer to that village organizational meeting as the landing round.
It all got done, right? Okay, so no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and it brings us to item C, which is village parking fee update. And I believe that the recommendation from the group working on that is for an annual pass for workers, which is unchanged resident and residents at $150, an annual transferable pass needed for short-term rentals at $1,000, contractor parking, including work vehicles and dumpsters at $50 a day, and Main Street Municipal Parking Lot would go to 75 cents an hour, and that would be 24 hours a day. And that's up from 50 cents an hour and $5 a day. It appears that we have to do the hours of chart, how long we're going to have the meters running, has to go to public hearing, so we'll carve that out at this time.
Fix that last. I think just the fees maybe.
We just can do the fees. According to Janet, we can't do that, so I would entertain a motion for just the four items I'd mentioned first.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye as well. Janet, we didn't fix that last time?
So just to clarify, under the current local law regarding parking, the Board of Trustees by resolution can set and amend the rates for parking in the parking meter zones and set and amend the maximum duration of time for parking by resolution. In other words, now we've got the two-hour. The exceptions, so to anything in the parking local law are that the provisions do not apply to parking before, cannot be changed because currently our parking is between 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., and that's an exception. And that also is an hours of when parking will be enforced. And the other thing is Sundays from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That is still on the books as being accepted out of the timeframe for parking during parking to be paid for parking, if you will.
Because of the church respect.
Okay, so at this point, we need to do a public hearing for that if we're going to change that law.
If you're going to amend the local law with regard to anything with the exception of rates and duration of time, it would be have to be done by a local law.
Then we can do the local law, but in the future, we can do it by resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so at this point tonight, we need a motion setting up the public hearing or making the amendment, Janet?
No, you can't set up a public hearing until I've drafted the local law because the notice of public hearing has to make that available. So we'll have to, whatever your, the board's pleasure is in reviewing the parking local law, maybe there's other changes that you'd like. So we should look at it in total, not just these two things that have come to light tonight.
But we're also going to charge 24 hours in immunity law. Does that apply as well?
Yes, because because of the times we're allowed to charge, right?
Right.
Okay, so we will be back in touch with you as to what we want, so that you can draft it, so that we can get it out to the public and we can set up a public hearing.
Right. The other, the other point I'll just point out is that the other exceptions are all day on holidays. We're not currently supposed to be charging. The obvious things are, we don't charge firemen if they're responding to an alarm. We don't charge officers or official village vehicles, nor do we have police officers on duty performing a police function subject to the parking local law.
Those apply.
Okay, great, thank you.
So with that being said, are we just moving mayor with the 150?
With the 150 was unchanged, $1,000 transferable pass, the contractor and work dumpster, $50 a day, and then the?
Are we bumping it up to 75 cents without the overnight or do we?
Yeah, I guess that's true. We can't go the overnight, can we?
So do we want to keep the rate increase independent and then adopt it, or do you want to do that later?
It's such a small amount. We may just, what do you think? What's your pleasure? You're the committee.
I would say do it now because if I have to go to the programmers to change anything, I might as well do it all at once.
Okay, but all we're going to be able to do is just during the day, correct?
Yeah, and that's fine, but if we're going to change rates.
Nine and six.
Yes, okay, very good.
What was the total per day then, since that's what's good?
It'll work out to 75 cents an hour.
$20, now we can't do it.
Well, but we can go whatever the, what is it?
No, 75 cents all day.
Was it nine and five? Is that the rate?
Nine to six.
Maybe about $9.80 a day. Yeah, it's gonna be about $8 a day.
Nine times.
Well, and I think that one is set up to max out at $5.
Right.
Because a $5 a day rate in that parking lot, so we'll figure out whatever the day rate is, and I can set it at that if you want. Or we can still do the five a day. It's entirely up to you.
It sounds like you're doing away with the day rate, right?
Let's just do away with the day rate at this point.
75 cents an hour for the time period that we currently have.
Okay.
So do we want to change it again, Mindy, as soon as we pass this local law?
And that's fine, but the rate itself, it's two different rate tables. So the rates are on one table within the machine, and then the timeframe in which you charge is in another table. So instead of, I mean, I can do it all at once. It doesn't really matter if you want to hold off on it.
It's $6.75 for the whole day. That's nine times 75 cents.
If it's not a big problem, do away with the $5 max, just let it be 75 cents an hour. And then we change. Okay, good. And we did already. Great, it's been so long.
So to be clear, and I'll talk to you about this tomorrow, in the main parking lots and the MBT lot, there's not going to be any maximum number of hours you can park?
We're just talking about the municipal.
Yeah, okay, so there's not going to be any maximum number of hours?
Yeah, the only thing we were talking about was before in the municipal lot, once you hit $5, it was for the day, and that's what we're doing away with. We're not talking about the number of hours you park there. And we didn't have a restriction on the number of hours in the big lots, did we?
No.
It was just on the street parking? Yeah.
On the street parking is two hours.
Right.
Right, and also, we're talking about parking. I think another change probably to the parking local law is going to be designation of a 15-minute loading zone. Is that true?
Yeah, I think that's item K on the agenda.
Okay, sorry. I was just staying on parking.
Janet, the loading zones, do they have a time in the law? Or can we change that loading zone time?
Right, so right now, I will read you what it says. "When official signs have been posted designating an area as a loading slash unloading zone, no person shall stop, stand, or park any motor vehicle in a loading slash unloading zone at the times and days posted, except for a commercial vehicle for the purpose of loading and unloading of merchandise goods and materials. Such parking of any motor vehicle for a period longer than that required for loading or unloading merchandise shall be deemed a violation of this article." So it seems to me that that language does not really apply to a 15-minute unload your gear and then move on because it also does, I think somewhere in here, talk about if you, if somebody, if you come into a loading zone and it's already full, that you can just go to the nearest parking spot. And I don't know that you want that for your purposes of the beach unloading.
Good.
All right, so the times, what's posted, it's not in the law, so we can change it from 3 o'clock to 1 o'clock if we would? The loading zone time?
Pardon me, Peter?
We can change the loading zone times from 3 o'clock to 1 o'clock without changing the law? Because it's posted?
Well, I'd have to, I didn't really look at that. I just read you what it says about loading zones.
Do we want to redo this in the next workshop?
That's where I'm heading. Yeah, yeah, okay, so let's look at all that by the next workshop. Thank you, Janet. Okay, that moves us on to item D on the agenda, which is Highway Department Promotion. And that would be for Jacob Corson to move to Labor MEO at a wage of $18.90 an hour. And that's according to the CFDA contract. He has received a CDL license, and this qualifies him for his pay increase. And he's an outstanding employee that Brad would like to move up. I would entertain a motion to approve his promotion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I just look back to see, because we had a motion in the second?
We never voted on that?
No, and I think we chose not to. Are we tabling all of it?
No.
Tabbing the second half?
Just the second half, so we're going to go with the, there's really only two at this point then. It's the transferable pass of $1,000 and the contractor parking at $50 a day because then everything else, and I guess we are going to 75 cents an hour in the immunity lot.
I guess specifically you mentioned the $1,000. That's the?
Transferable pass. And it's important to note that people are abusing the other pass that's supposed to be for single ladies who are right now using it as a transferable pass. So I think it's important to have an option for folks who need a transferable pass. Yes, and then the other one was just something that's unchanged, so it's really just those three items. So you're good?
Yep.
Okay, and we did, we did pass.
What kind of solution? Should we get a sticker or much? It says it's just a piece of paper?
I think Billy had thought it was going to be just a different color permit or a hanger of a different color hanger.
I mean, so you just said that normal $150 one is being abused because they could have.
Yeah, right now, yeah. So it'd be a different color one.
Or shouldn't it be a sticker that says you attach the vehicle?
Because if you get a hanger, it's still transferable.
Right.
Unless there's a plate number assigned to it.
There will be. That's the way over there assigned to them now. That's correct.
Yeah, but if it's not a sticker, people couldn't, or their plate number's assigned to it? So it has to be.
Right. Okay. I'm sorry. This was on Highway Department.
I don't remember Peter ever talking this much in 10 years.
Isn't that to be here?
Why don't we vote on Jacob just to?
All in favor of the Highway Department motion? Motion passes. Okay. And then sadly, we have a resignation. I'll read that to you. It says, "Dear Mayor and Board Members, this letter informs you of my retirement from the Lake Placid Village, effective May 1st, 2021. It was heavy heart that I leave my position, which I have worked at for the past 25 years as tax collector. I truly enjoyed working here and will miss all the people I have met throughout the years. Time to live life and enjoy warm weather during the winter months. Sincerely, Sharon Nugent." I would entertain a motion to accept her resignation.
Regretful.
Now, we don't have to approve this, and she has to stay.
Was it at the table? Sorry, Sharon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Mindy, have you interviewed anyone?
No, we just closed the application period, so we're going to start making calls this week.
But remember also that this is going to replace Erin, and that was already done.
Yeah. Except, but we're going to be one short.
Yep, that's right. Okay, item M, Destination Management Plan Liaison. Like I said, I planned on that being you. I didn't want to force it on you, but you seem to have agreed. So all in favor with Jackie Kelly being our liaison to the destination management?
Do we need, are we doing a formal motion?
We need a motion.
So.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Jay.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and then item G is Review Board Appointment. And the Review Board Appointment is Yvanda Remondo. I'm close on that? Okay.
So I'll remind the board that this has to also be approved by the town board.
I believe they already have.
Yes, I heard that they have.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, we also have a motion to approve the STR, the Short-Term Rental Appeal Board Appointment, and that is Andrew Teague, but motion to accept his motion.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion there? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes as well. Okay, and that brings us to item I, which is the Lake Placid Volunteer Fire Department Officers Candidates. You all have a copy of those. I will read those. The Chief Engineer, which is what they call the head fire driver, is Michael St. Louis. First Assistant Chief will be Tori Hoffman. Second Assistant Chief, Adam Marshall. First Captain, Joshua Pelkey. Second Captain, Jennifer Marshall. Third Captain, Ryan St. Louis. Fourth Captain, Aaron Barney. I entertain a motion to accept this slate. That's right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. I'd just like to add that special thanks again to Tori Hoffman. He was a holdover during COVID last year, and he ended up putting in two years. But thank him for his services, and we'll wish Michael St. Louis all the best in the coming year. That brings us to our bench dedication. And we have two of them. You have the names here. We can take them together if you like or separately. Together is good. Okay. And you saw the notation of the kissing bench on the land. Making sure that's okay with everybody? Any discussion on that?
Ew, me too. I mean, I'm just wondering if it's politically correct.
Is that what they wanted on it?
They wanted on it. It's looking politically correct.
Well.
It's not with harmony and all that kind of thing, but.
Isn't that a COVID issue?
Well, not if you kiss somebody you live with.
New pod.
That's still fun.
Do I hear a motion to pass both of itches?
So.
A second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes as well.
Starting with Joe Lamb, he said the one that was removed now from one main park is grandfather, his grandparents. It's the ones with his parents, but the other one was, has to be replaced in the park.
Everything goes side by side.
Well, yeah, I don't know where, nobody knows where these are going.
No, that's. Okay, item K is the 15-minute unloading zone for the canoe and kayak. Any discussion there? Who would like to make a motion? Peter, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So we got to get Brad to, to get a sign.
Yeah, I'll tell Brad.
So we'll go back to what I said earlier. Under our existing parking code, it does define loading zones quite differently from what the purpose of this loading zone is. So I think it'll have to be made clear what this zone is for because if we just call it a loading zone as defined in our code, it says, I read it to you, which is for the loading, unloading of merchandise goods and materials.
Janet, what's the wording like in the 15-minute zone? I know there are 15-minute zones in the park in code too.
I don't see any 15-minute zones right as I'm flipping through here, Mark.
Oh, because there are them. We have signs for them. Okay.
Well, those are, you mean, those are in the existing loading zones where they talk about during certain hours? Is that what you're referring to?
15-minute parking right across from MBT Bank, so if you need to go to the bank, you can just park there and run in.
That's in the parking lot, then I'm sure there's nothing in the code about that.
Very.
We want to expand that once we redo that.
Right. Okay. Pardon me again, so we got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And it passes as well. Okay, we did that, I think, already, but now we've really got. So item I, sorry, is wastewater treatment, and that is to send Carol Macy. It's not to send her, it is virtual training. It's a two-day course, and it is $90 for both days, and it'll be on Tuesday, May 18th and Wednesday, May 19th. And this is for her annual technical training workshop. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
As well. Okay, and this is the last item on here. Item M is just the NICOM Annual Meeting, June 9th through the 11th. This is just to let any trustee that would like to go be approved to go. And we also include David Corson in this or not?
I don't think it is specific to him. I could ask him, but I don't think it's really for judges.
Okay.
He's never gone to.
This is just for the board, right? Okay.
But not village clerks or treasurers?
No, this is really, to my understanding, more, well, Mindy, do you have any interest? I shouldn't speak for you, but I thought.
I don't really think, I mean, NICOM has some New York State Comptroller stuff that comes out, but I get most of that from GFOA, and I attend that once a year, so I don't feel it necessary for me to go.
I think this is pretty specific to the mayor and trustees.
Yeah.
But you know, you don't have to come up with a law.
The September meeting is the one that?
That's the one that's more open to everybody, yeah.
Okay.
They do say they're limiting it to 150. I know both the mayor and Jackie are interested, so anyone else, let me know as soon as possible. Okay, I know you have school, so.
Yeah, if you do intend to go, let her know immediately.
I would highly recommend it.
Okay, do I entertain a motion to approve the board members going in favor?
So like, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes as well.
Do you plan on going?
Yes. Okay, anything else to come under clerk items?
No, there is not.
Okay, that moves us into treasurer items. And they were ruled tonight by our two trustees. Okay, and do I hear a motion to accept? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Here's to thousands as well.
Mindy, anything else to come under treasury items tonight?
Not at this time.
Okay, very good. Any new business to come before the board tonight?
You were so right.
Any old business?
I spoke to you. The other day, I asked Jay about the trolley, Plastic Express, and the GPS, and having an app so people know where the trolley is, so they know if it's going to be signed. And we called Jim Dugan from the county.
Yep.
And he's the guy who is responsible for the trolley system.
Okay.
And he said, people know where it is, more user friendly, we're going to get more riders, and they're going to, the whole system's based on files and number of riders as far as the grant money is concerned. He's now not so nice, and he said, you're misunderstanding the way the grant program works. But, well, anyway, he agreed to come up and explain this to us and to research. He said he applied for a grant for new GPS, but that didn't come through. I guess I was being too pushy for his style.
No.
Anyway, at the end of our conversation, it got a lot nicer, and he wants to work with us to approve that. He said, he basically said, until two years ago, why didn't you guys do it? Like, we ran the, I was supposed to model, it was a long year, two or four years ago. And so, but the simplest thing was just for us to give the drivers a cell phone and have a RightShare app. And then people could, like, last express app, I don't know how technical any of this is or how difficult it would be. Seems to be, you know, like Uber. You know exactly where your Uber is. It's based on the guy's cell phone.
Right.
So maybe it wouldn't say five minutes, two minutes, where it would show where the trolley is at any given time, and the people could make its determination if they want to wait for it, at the very least. But I don't know enough about it to be informed.
So maybe we can invite him to a workshop and see what we can do. Okay.
Peter, Peter, could Patrick help with something like that?
Sure, the guy's brilliant.
I know. I know, but I'm wondering if you had a discussion with him, if he'd have some ideas as to maybe how an app could work or something else.
Okay, I'll ask him. Then you could, if we can come up a solution, then maybe you could talk to the supervisor and see.
Yes, that's fine. I don't know if that, I guess that was old business. Do we, you'll continue to pursue that?
Yeah.
Yep, I agree. Anything else under old business? Under mayor items, I just have one item. It's the village cleanup is going to be on May 1st, which is Saturday, and it's going to be a virtual cleanup this year. And by that, I mean, they're not gathering in the parks they have. There's not going to be pizza, whatever, S and P. It's going to be basically, you can either go on her Facebook page, which is Andrew Grau, and that Facebook page is Lake Placid Annual Cleanup Day, or you can go to her website, which is LPVillagecleanup@gmail.com. And you can sign up to do different, do different streets. She also gave us her phone number, which is 518-524-3832. It's a good cause. Hopefully, everyone will get out and help. Unfortunately, last year, COVID shut us down on that. There also will be gloves, I believe, and safety precautions and bags available. But you can get all that from her Facebook or her website. Okay, and that's all I have for mayor items. Any commissioner reports?
You all do down at their construction site? Well, thanks. The street is. Not what I envisioned, you know, as for the park, but I was thinking more of like dirt and water. Yeah, I think there's more of a conversation. Yeah, I think there's more of a conversation with Brad. There just seems to be some the signage, the signage, just that there just seems to be some parking groups on that seems to be kind of blocked off by cones. And I, and I get that.
I drove through there on Saturday, though, and there was a couple of people parked in there because they have an outlet around. I just don't think it's clear that you can go in there and.
I think that's unless you're assertive enough. If you're not assertive enough, you're just gonna keep going. And I think that's, I was, I received some communications that we could maybe possibly address that.
Well, here's also what I know is that they, I think Kerberki would have worked on Friday, but the state is the one that really didn't want them working. They were afraid that the chance, we did get snow, they didn't want the street torn up and damaging our clouds. So that's probably gonna work.
That's, that's.
But that's, that's why they didn't. I mean, if you really did watch the weather, it looked like it was pushing off the east, but that's the reason they didn't. Plus, the state wanted the cones on the trench that was dug. The new coal patch was put back. And that's why the cones had to be left. And that's why the discrepancy, and I do agree with you, and I've talked with Brad about that, that and even our police department wasn't really sure where the cones should or shouldn't go and if you should park there. But yes, you could have parked there in hindsight and in the future, Brad's gonna talk with the police department and let them know. So the people will know. And we'll, we'll try and get this out. I'll go with case.
Okay.
And hopefully, as we move down, unfortunately, the first people on Main Street had to be the guinea pigs for how it'll set the tone going through.
I, I drove down the wrong way just because I wasn't paying attention to the signage and then as people, I was like, this doesn't seem right. And so luckily, there wasn't a lot of people, so I could just turn.
Lane of your own.
Yeah, it was just something like, huh. The rest of the street will be easier because the waterline shifted now to the west side. Yeah, where it was the east side, it should be easier from there. Yeah, but the signage initially was, you know, is people, if the one suggestion I did receive was that when you're at the stop sign coming from the Mirror Lake Inn, there's, it says traffic this way, even if I was taken and put almost like in front of one of the cones. So there's a couple of people that did drive down like that are obviously, I think they were tourists, they weren't locals, but if it was more help where they say, hey, right where that big cone is, you have to take a right. Instead of, because it is, it is kind of high up on the stop sign.
We could mention it, but unfortunately, a lot of this stuff is a DOT, detour. We can't change anything, but we can mention it.
Okay, that, that's the only thing that I heard other than the parking and not knowing that. Seeing some people that are not from here driving down the wrong way because, and I woke up and like, here's the stop sign, here's the sign, because let's go this way.
The other thing you might have heard that happened was the Elgin blew a hydraulic line. Our main line of fence, keeping the dirt and dust down, but I saw it go by this morning, so the line was ordered, was put on, was going five later that day after the end. Well, I saw the line flatbed down to the garage. Yeah, but then it was out later that day. Was it because somebody was like, oh, the street sweep.
I think I heard it was.
Yeah. But so it's back in service now. Anything else under commissioner reports? Okay, any questions? I don't know if Elizabeth is on or not. It looks like Andy's on. Andy's on. Any questions?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hey, all right, great, thanks. Just two questions I have for now. The canoe kayak unloading zone, where, where did you say that is?
It's going to be over by the tennis courts towards where the boat launches on Mirror Lake.
It's the last parking spot toward the lake before the entrance to the park.
Okay, on the, on the side where, on the side where the brewery, where the brewery is?
No, the other side.
The other side, the park side.
Um, no, on the, that's on Mirror Lake Drive. If you were to pull into that area to go into the beach, it would be the first parking spot on your left.
Basically where it used to be.
Yeah, and if, if you do remember before, we took away parking when we put the sidewalk in, and that's where the fifteen-minute parking slot was. So it'll, it'll basically be just a little bit further back from where it was.
Okay, so.
We've had several people ask us, and it is, it is a hazard when you stop, you try to unload, you've got your children there, and it's nice to be able to let them get out of the street and then the spouse or someone will park their car. But that's the reason we put that back.
Right, but it's across the street from the hotel is what you're saying?
That's correct, exactly.
Okay, yeah, I remember, I remember where the old one was. Yeah. So the other question was, I know what the parking changes. Janet will need to draft a local law to be approved to set up a public hearing to make those changes, specifically the hours, right? And did you, did you officially direct Janet to do that, or do you have to, or? I don't remember that part.
Well, for us to have.
I got the message, Andy, I got the message.
Okay, so you, okay, so that will happen.
I think what your question, for us to do this, we have to have a law so the public can read it, so they know whether they want to come and be part of the discussion, and that's what Janet will write up for us.
Well, I understand. I just didn't know whether you need to pass a resolution to ask Janet to do that, but basically, you told her that, you know, please do that, and she's going, will be doing that.
She's on it.
With, with the caveat that we're going to look at the entire parking local law to see if there's other changes that are appropriate at this time.
Gotcha, okay. And once that's all ready and, and we'll take a look at it and, and then go from there, a public hearing will have to be done before it's approved, correct?
Absolutely.
Awesome, okay. Those are the like questions I have.
Is there anybody else? Thank you, Andy. Okay. If that's the case, then I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
All in favor?